Hi.
Hi. I was just brought attention to this. It's my understanding that you all were thinking about opening a recreation center near the prison? Is that correct?
That's correct. That's one possibility. What we're really looking for is a bond to have enough money to create the...
That's the site.
Yes, that's the site. It's not the ordinance. We're here to discuss the bond in which we believe it's hoped to be able to afford a recreation center. There is currently a building there. Chused by the Wyatt Center, I guess they use it for kind of gym recreation.
And what other sites are also...
I don't know. Josh was not here. To answer that, that's the site at this point.
Well, as a parent, I personally would not want my child over near the prison. That is not an ideal place for anyone's child. Is that enough that we have pedophiles on almost every street in a one-square-mile radius? To put a recreational center right at the prison is not a good idea. No parent in their right mind is going to send your kid over there. It will be a waste of money and time putting something like that there. Why not over at Higgins? Where is that all that space? Basketball court, the track, the playground that was just put in. There's still plenty of space over there that you could still be able to do all of these extra things which is within the list.
Again, we're here for the bond issue. Whether we get it on the ballot, what people can decide. That's what we're here as a council. Anything else?
Just a moment.
Thank you.
Ed Napole. Ed Napole, 68 Nacho Dave Street. I asked the council president beforehand if I could read a statement that was emailed to the council that Councilman Lazir wanted entered into the record. He is sick this evening. He's been sick all day. He started to get ill yesterday. And he asked if... And you know he'd be here because he's a fighter. So I will proceed to read what he sent to everyone in an email. "To all city officials, Thomas is the S.C. council member. What by? I hereby file my official objection to special city council meeting scheduled on August 7, 2018 at 6:00 p.m. in City Hall due to not being compliant with rules of the City Council. Central Falls seat charter revised ordinance regarding proper notice of seven days of council agendas and all council ordinance and other documents presented to the City Council. Prior to meeting, I also condemn that the second of final reading and passage of the orders of the council agenda may be a violation of the city's charter, Chapter 2, Section 2, 20-201, 6, as not being at least 72 hours have elapsed between two such readings, actually being voted upon on Monday, July 31st at the special city council meeting at approximately 8:30. Due to the great importance of these legal actions and the $5 million in city bond reprimand in legal jeopardy, it is incumbent on the city council to proceed with all due consideration of all fiscal concerns and all our fiduciary responsibilities, and feel that it would be proper in the city's best interest to table any action on this matter and reschedule this meeting. Due to health issues, I'm not able to attend this evening's meeting to present this formal objection in person. So I am sending it via email to the council president, city clerk, city solicitor, and to present it on my behalf by Ed Napole in the meeting." Thank you for allowing me to enter that into the record. I do have a comment. At the last meeting, I did ask what the $200 would represent in tax increase. A dollar... What's a dollar cost? What do we have to do to raise a dollar here in taxes? I don't see... Oh, there's Lenny. Lenny's probably got that information for me. $5 million is a lot of money. The last few years, we've had millions of dollars in surplus. And the question comes is, what have we done with that money? Have we had an outline of where that surplus has gone? You know, what's the city using for that surplus? I mean, there's more than enough money to do the same thing you want to do. My second is, as far as the recreation facility goes, I sound like I'm not for it. I would love to see a community center here. My concern is, I've been here a long time. I've served on the board at the community center. I've been called when the community center has been in dire need of financial money. I was called when they wanted rescuing from the YMCA. So in four or five instances I know of, the city's recreation center, the Holden Center, failed because of money. And it was because there was no good performer set up but never followed through. If there's going to be a community center, we need to have responsible people who are running that center. We need to have a budget. We need to have a good performer. We need to know what we're going to spend and where we're going to get the money. Is the money going to come from the city? Is it going to come from the residents or the people who utilize that facility? I just quickly went through what the status of that committee that sat down, the commission, to look at it. And I read that people are willing to be paid between $10 and $30. $10 and $30 a year membership does not sustain the walk that community facility. It didn't before, it won't now. So the question, someone needs to sit down and figure out what the cost over the long term is going to be and where that money is going to come from. And like I said, I'd still like to know with that $200,000, what that's going to cost the city because I still believe there will be tax increases. Thank you.
Maring tomorrow. Marings Bond, 76 Evans Street. My concern is mostly about the bond. As was mentioned last time, why rush? All right? If there, in my opinion, if there's a new high school in our future, then why not wait and make sure that that building is a focal point and a pride of our community? You can have two gyms in a new high school. We have, right now, right now in Central Falls, we have buses giving rides to Central Falls kids to access the pools in Pawtucket and in Lincoln. So why not now get buses to bus the children to the courts in Pawtucket, in Lincoln, at the Y? Or even ask Segway if you can use their gym. You know, if there's such a need right now, right now, for basketball. As far as office space is concerned for the seniors' activities, there's space available in the newly acquired bank building on Dexter Street. The new building across the street from my high school, you've got space there to hold activities for seniors. Even now, the Darnex Bank offers their building to accommodate city functions. Also, I still don't accept the explanation of the $3 million needed for the 15 streets. I know we passed, or you passed, that green streets. But, you know, that was a promise. I hope there was a promise. You don't have to have a tree, you know, every 10 feet on every street in Central Falls. Okay, so that's that. Also, Section 11, Number 3, for the $1 million bond for the community centers, not a word about the purchase of the detention center. It's to renovate, it's to whatever, but nothing about purchase of a building, and especially the building across the street from the detention center. My comment, if I'm off the top of my head, or what do they say, off the cuff, I'm kind of concerned that $850,000 sounds like a bailout to the detention center. My second set of questions is this. Mr. Councilman Acosta, who cannot answer the question, and I know it's the first reading or an introduction of whatever it is, to have homeowners, the... My question is, as a homeowner, do I have to reestablish my residency for this... What is it, $62,000 credit? Do you have... All residents then have to reestablish their residency? Yes?
I don't know. It's an upper introduction tonight. Mr. Acosta will be here in September, I assume. It's his...
Okay.
Just upper introduction. So do you have a copy?
I read it online. Also, my question, and he's not clear, but is that going to replace the existing exemption? Or is it a complement to it? And that is, I believe, all I have to say. Thank you. Pardon me, one second. Could I? One more thing. Sorry. Just one more thing. One more thing.
You're like the Lobo.
Is it? You know, the thing is that I didn't write it down, so it goes away. Why not pull this bond issue, this $5 million bond issue, so that the people of Central Falls can have a better understanding of what's going on here and have a special election next year? We don't have to open up all the wards. We can open up one, possibly two voting places and have a special election. This is $5 million. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm sitting here because it's just easier to be off my computer. I'm reading off some comments from residents who could not attend the city council meeting. In my other role, I also work for the Central Falls School District. And I let my students know that I would read their comments about, most importantly, the $1 million renovation and bond for the community center. A lot of them said that if it's located next to the prison, that they would not go to the community center. And these are high school students ages 14 to 17. And I have comments from Louis Silva. He said, "I cannot make it. It was last minute when I found out about it." But hey, the center, the detention center, when people feel okay dropping off their kids there at jail. He said, "I thought it would be $11 million to open up the center, again, not $1 million." And he emphasized having donations done for the community center. He mentioned Viola Davis and reaching out to different folks around the country who have donated to Central Falls before to bring in those funds to the city so that the taxpayers don't have to carry that burden. Danny Xavier Napina, who was a former employee of the community center on Cowan Street, said, "He definitely thinks I should not be in the vicinity of the jail." Said, "God forbid you have another escapee like last time when they get their hair and tie up a child. That's the last thing the city needs." We have Blanche Charriere, who's at Wilfred Banner. She said, "Can I go this evening? Please let me know what's going on. I'm very interested. Been reading everything, mostly about the pros. The city is looking great. They're not proud to be here since birth." Former councilwoman Stephanie Gonzalez said, "I cannot attend. Would like to know how borrowing any amount of money impacts the long-term fiscal health of the city. Everyone wants a community center. Shame on those who allowed us to go into receivership. Then bankruptcy enforced the closing of the center. $11 million for a brand-new building sounds amazing, but that would mean borrowing an amount that is 61% of our entire budget. Yikes. What does that mean for already tax-bearing homeowners, small business owners? The idea of a building in front of the detention center sucks. Our kids have had to use a field in front of that for profit prison for years, and we shouldn't keep forcing our kids to play in front of it. Shame on leaders from the '90s who felt a private prison was a good idea within our square miles. The prison should be shut down. Our kids deserve better options."
I want one or other because this is a public opinion, and she's reading everybody that put opinion in the Facebook. I don't think that's fair.
Can I have a solicitor give me an opinion on that?
You have five minutes, and you can use it whatever extent you want.
Thank you.
Or the form of the rule.
Thank you. And Councilman Acosta, who is not here, said he approves everything that the former councilwoman Stephanie Gonzalez said. He said, "This is what I would have said had the meeting been held when I wasn't doing fieldwork." And they all said that I could read their comments during public comment. So I'm doing what's best for our residents. So sorry if that offends other people.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anything else?
Oh, Monica. You want comments? No?
Sure.
Come on.
Calum, on 303 Central Street. This will be short. One question I had was the million-dollar number. I don't know. I was at the... So everybody understands background. I was on the board of the Wyatt, on the expansion.
Speak out, Al.
I was at the board on the Wyatt when the expansion went through. Part of that was the reason for the way we financed that acquisition. Okay, it was just, you know, it's a business, it's a business thing. I thought the number would be a little bit lower than that because I think we're at the tail end of the purchase piece. Okay, the lease purchase option. $850, $850 could be right. I'm just saying that that's number one. The other thing that I wanted, it's already been mentioned twice. I don't think it's a good place for a community center either. We had to redo the face of all the windows on the... They come presided the field simply because of what was going on in the windows when our kids were out. And the windows themselves, by the way. The other piece of that is, okay, so that's fixed. You also have to take a look, and this is not prejudice or anything else like that. It's just fact. You've also got visitors walking easy by both ways through there. And some of them on very nice avenues. So I would agree with everybody, said that that's a tough place to do something. What other things related to that? I'm not sure. So, as I asked Mr. Jersey, you've got our finance director, okay, who serves on the board there, and is also, what I heard was, also negotiating the contract? I'm sorry. That doesn't, from my perspective, that doesn't pass much of the case in terms of contract terms. There's nothing wrong with him sitting on the board. Negotiating contracts.
If you have one more thing. You have one more thing.
That's how you're all in line, check out.
Dear Simon Siegel, 14 North Street, Central Falls. I echo many of the sentiments that were said. I'm actually more focused on the bond, the $5 million bond. I heard some information about why we were rushing it, but I also think that there's a little more information that we could get in one of those things regarding the sustainability of what we're proposing for a community center. So there's people who don't like its location, and then there's people, you know, who just don't... Who like it there, or they want something different. Some people want a pool, right? But here's the thing. Whatever we choose to do for a community center, we need to make sure we have a plan that makes it sustainable. For those of you who don't know the story about the original community center on Cowan, Ms. Bulen can probably give you a good lesson on that because she sat on the Wyatt board. When they ran it, and they were going to put money into it, and they were going to make it something new, the city decided they wanted to take it over and manage it completely themselves. And we see where that went. So we don't have a community center because we couldn't afford one. So, again, we would love to do all these things, right? Who wouldn't love to have a new community center, all new schools? All these things are great, but who's paying for this? Right? So us taxpayers are already maxed out on our real estate taxes. For those of you who are homeowners in the city, and I think everybody sitting there now is, you've seen your taxes increased. And I do not agree that we had to increase our taxes like this. We've had million, $2 million surpluses year over year since we went into receivership. And that's a fact. I agree with whoever said, I think it was Ms. Bulen, who said that we should have a reporting out of where all those surpluses went. Yes. Somebody's going to say they're on the... It's on the website. Go figure it out for yourself. But I think that's very transparent of this administration. I think it should be very clear in size. We're now out of bankruptcy, and we're now out of receivership. And I think there should be some sort of catharsis, like just bring it all together and do a nice... You know, the former ADAFO is actually on our payroll. So it should be quite easy to roll that out for us. So I'm concerned about the long-term sustainability of whatever we do for a community center. And I would love if we actually had a substantial plan of all these things rather than just going out for a $5 million bond and saying, "We're going to have $5 million. We're going to use a 15 rows." And by the way, my street is listed, and I don't think we need our street. I live on, we got eight houses. Nobody's ever asked me, but I can just tell you I don't think it's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have to read. I name, ordinance authorizing the city's Central Falls to provide design, construction, renovation, repair, rehabilitation, alterations, improvement, furnishings, and equipment out public roads, sidewalks, sidecar, city parks, like all this, including but not limited to Jenks Park and Route J Golden Community Center, and authorizing the financing thereof, including the issue of not more than $5 million bonds, notes, and other emphasis of indebtedness thereof. Second.
Thank you. And I think we have an addition, a sub-A to that city council would make clear this point. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, Mr. President. As a result of Councilman Fonseca separating the bonds into $3 million, $1 million, $1 million, I consulted with our bond council, and there were some technical changes that I had to make that are before you. In essence, as you'll see, I had to create three sections of the ordinance so that each of the proposed questions have their own section. Section 1 is the $3 million for the road. Section 2 is the $3 million for Jenks. And Section 3 is the $1 million for a community center. So I did not make any... The amendment before you are the recommendations of the bond council so that it's technically correct.
So at this point, we will need to consider the sub-A 2 of the record as the ordinance for... That motion by Councilman Fonseca, available second by Councilman Fonseca. Any further discussion? Here we go. Staying at the roll call vote?
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilman Figaro?
Yes.
Councilman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilman Ragar?
Yes.
Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Now, the pro motion of the ordinance before us as an amendment.
Second.
Ever motion by Councilman Figaro to approve. Second by Councilman Solano. Any discussion on...
So during the Monday meeting, I asked for a public outreach. So I would appreciate that in writing before.
Council President, what was requested after last reading was a public outreach plan. I have the public outreach plan. Please note that these are alternative dates. I have to, should this be approved, I have to lock in those actual dates and the locations. But you'll see here a multi-passed plan that includes four public information sessions. Social media outreach, website outreach, or information posted on our website. Bond presentation is already posted there. Advertisement in the Pawtucket Times, a special edition of the Mayor's Newsletter, and of course, in-person availability through standard office hours or City Hall hours here from City Hall. I would like to also mention that many of the questions that have been asked tonight either were answered during the last council meeting where myself and the finance director gave a three-hour presentation on this item. But should the council approve this measure, I would invite all members of the public to attend one of the four or more public outreach sessions that are proposed so that we can have really important discussions on any of your concerns. That's the council. For the record. And I'll have some here in case anyone from the public would like to...
Yes, I also asked for a financial breakdown of the up to $1 million. I know last evening, solicitor mentioned the $800,000 change for the purchase. You guys mentioned the floors. I asked for a formal breakdown in writing for what that up to $1 million looks like for residents.
So the question was a financial breakdown of the $1 million that would be used to pursue and... That would be used to acquire and renovate a community center. And so what I'd say is that what we are asking of voters and of the council here tonight is to approve up to $1 million. And so we have not negotiated that purchase price. So I cannot provide a budget on a location that has not been... On a price that hasn't been agreed upon. But it would be up to $1 million for acquisition, and then any renovations that need to be done. And one of the concrete renovations that we know need to be done at the Wyatt Training Facility, which is not the Wyatt, it's the separate building, is a replacement of the floors, which is estimated around $40,000, $50,000, maybe $40,000 to $70,000. And so without, we are not in that stage of negotiation for the purchase price to be able to provide that specific. So there are two items. There are only two items, and I want to make this clear for the public, that this money would be allocated for. It's listed in the bond question. Acquisition, whatever that price is, which it could not be more than $1 million, no matter what, and renovation of the space. So whatever renovations would need to happen, up to $1 million. It wouldn't be a penny over, and it gives us permission to go ahead and negotiate that price.
A penny higher.
That's it, not a penny lower?
Yeah.
Not a penny higher, my fault.
So do we, did we do an inspection on the building? Because from what I've heard, the roof isn't structurally, the roof wasn't built structurally to support that kind of activity.
Support what kind of activity?
Like the roof just wasn't, did we do an inspection of the space?
So the standard process is that we conduct an appraisal to get an estimation of what the value of the space is. An appraisal has been done, as was mentioned at the last council meeting. The appraisal came back for the full site, for the full property, including all of the parking spaces, which in reality, we probably wouldn't need. But the appraisal came back at, I believe, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand.
But before an appraisal, it's completely, you need an inspection to know what's going on in the building.
I, I think that would be part of the conversation. But what we are asking as a, as an administration, as the municipality, is to allow voters the option to allow us, or to allow voters to authorize us to pursue that for up to one million dollars.
So if, if it's approved today, would you go through with an inspection? Because for me, I'm trying to be physically responsible. So if, say we don't have an inspection, say that building needs a lot more work that Wyatt isn't even telling us about, because they will do that.
I don't know that.
They haven't paid us taxes in a, in a year, so they can do whatever they want, clearly. So how do we know that there's not more fixes to that building, right? We're literally going to acquire a building, a new building for the city. How do we know that, that we can maintain the building? That we have the people to maintain it and that it's structurally sound? So that we can build and do those activities?
And so we are absolutely understand that what we are asking for is up to one million. We wouldn't spend over that. And so that property, and if that location doesn't work, what we're asking voters to do is to allow us to pursue a property. Right now, we have identified the Wyatt as a possible option and we think it's a, hopefully a feasible option. But to authorize us to pursue and acquire a property and renovate that property with up to one million dollars. If we cannot do that with that location, then we would have to search for another location or come up with another option. But I think that we are at the point where we have. Uh, we are at the point where we have an appraisal for the property. We think we have an opportunity to ask the negotiations. And if there are more repairs that need to happen, that's part of the negotiation that happens. And so we would probably continue and push those negotiations should we have approval of the voters to do so.
So the price of voters voting, I guess, I'm trying to understand how is voters know what they're getting themselves into financially and pro, like programmatically? Like you're saying, okay, basketball courts, classrooms. How, if we don't even know what the purchase price is, if we don't know what, we don't even know the inspection? How voters know?
When you're negotiating a property, you can't, I can't stand here and tell everyone I know what the final purchase price is going to be. That'd be, that would be physically irresponsible. So what we're estimating is that we can accomplish and meet the needs of our residents, our seniors, our youth, and our families that need space for up to one million dollars. And should it go over that one million dollars, then that is not something that we would pursue.
So what happens if you put it up so low, then that million dollars is there, right? So say voters vote for it. And then, and then we decide it's two million dollars, what happens then?
So we would have to come up with a, a separate option, but we are not able to go over the one million dollars. And so we're off the, what we're looking for the council and better yet, the public to make an informed decision on is that we believe that we have an opportunity to pursue this property. And so I can't guarantee what the purchase price is going to be. But to provide context to the council and to the voters, we conducted an appraisal, which is the first step in the process. We conducted an appraisal and there needs to, yes, there, there will be an inspection and that will be used to negotiate the purchase price. I can't, there's no way I can make a promise to the council right now as to what the purchase price is going to be, but I can tell you that it won't be over a million dollars. And so this, yes, sorry. And I just want to mention that this, and I, I, you know, I wish the, the public was here for the last meeting and I, I please encourage you to come out to the following meetings that we have because I go into more detail on this. And I had a good conversation with, with my, my friend Jeff, who brought up some really good points that I'm going to incorporate into that presentation to make sure that the public is aware of what the city is looking to pursue. There's been a lot of questions that were brought up that have been answered and I'd love to go into detail on that. I don't have the presentation material here. But I think this is a, a good question that the community needs to discuss. And I think it's worthy of a conversation between my, the administration, city council members, and the residents. And so what can I, what we can say is we have identified an opportunity that we think can work, can meet the immediate needs that we have. Our recreation department is here, they are struggling for space in the city. When it rains and we have summer basketball, we have to cancel the league. Why? Because we don't have the space. And so we need a space of our own and I think that this meets an immediate need at a reasonable price. We all would love a new community center, eleven million dollars. Our bond attorneys have told us eleven million dollars is not something the city can handle at this moment. So I just wanted to throw that out there, we feel that we can meet our, our residents' needs at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, I understand that there's a, a residence that has concerns because of the location of the, the location, I've thrown all the, all the fishing and that. But I also wanted to say that my company studio has been there forever. And it's a, it's where a lot of sport is being practiced all the time. And we are thinking about security and about where we are more safe. In my point of view, we can be safe here, but we can be more safe than anyone else. And I never thought that twenty kids and six adults was going to lose their life in the place where they was supposed to go then, and that happened in Sandy Hook in Connecticut. So the space that we are looking at right now is the best option that we have until now for the, for, for, for the, for this community center. So we should consider that there's a lot of, a lot of things that we can find out. But eleven million dollars, like you just mentioned, is about sixty percent of our budget, the budget of the city. So think about eleven million dollars for, for, for the recreation center. It's, it's, it's something that we cannot do at this time or maybe in the future. Unless somebody come up with a magic, uh, the magic team and bring the eleven million, uh, however they can.
And yeah, the council member.
Yeah. Five million is also thirty percent of our budget, so I just want to keep that context. So for me, I like to plan things forward. So with the community center, with any of these, the streets, with the parks, what I've been asking the city for is a plan, right? I don't know if you guys have seen across the street from the high school, the, the learning lab that's over there. We spent two point three million dollars, six hundred thousand dollars tax pay dollars went into that building. What's, what's the, what's happening in that building? It's closed, it's closed. You cannot go in there. You, me as a resident, I work for the district, I can't go in there when I want to, okay? We spent two point three million dollars. That is twenty percent of our budget, about fifteen percent of our budget. Think about it. So when people say five million, eleven million, it, it just needs to be a plan. I don't care if it's five hundred thousand, I don't care if it's five hundred dollars. When we're going forward as a city, we need to make sure that we have a plan, even for the parks, the bond. What is our plan for the renovation? You guys, a lot of you guys worked for parks and wrecks. Do you guys have the maintenance? Do you guys have the staff to do all this work? So for me, when I'm making these financial decisions and, and programmatic decisions, I want to make sure that we have a plan to carry out all these works, right? So if we don't have a plan for the community center, is it going to be sitting like 115 Illinois? Right there across the street from the high school? That building's been built since before this year started, it's been built. It's fully usable. Why are we doing anything with that building? If it's for the residents, if it's for the students? That's all I have to say. And then for the three million dollar streets, we're asking for three million dollars for fifteen streets in the city, fifteen. For the last three years that I've been on the council, we spent two hundred thousand for fifteen, twenty streets. So we went from two hundred thousand to three million. So you can correct if it's wrong. From what I, my understanding, the two hundred thousand that came from Wyatt and it's in, it's in writing somewhere, that's what we use to pave the streets, to fix the streets in, in the past. So how do we go from twenty thousand to three million dollars? That's what taxpayers have to pay for, three million dollars for the streets. To do fifteen streets, some on that list that don't even need any work. So as a city that's as tax burning as we are, we're going to dedicate three million dollars to fix the streets when we have homeless people out on the streets? I just asked for the plan, the three million dollar plan. I asked for a plan for the community center, I'm asking a plan for the parks and wrecks. Guys, when I'm all for renovating and doing what's best, but I want it to be sustainable and I want it to be in the best interest of our residents. That's it.
Any other council member?
I just, bottom line, this is going to be, anybody who lives in the city, this is going to be your decision. So people need to welcome vote. If you want it, you vote for it, and if you don't want it, vote no on it. And if you want it, just vote yes on it, but get educated about it. City's going to have some sessions, it's very important that the community attends and that we spread the word so that the community attends. Because we've done this before, no one shows up. We have two people. So the community needs to come out and advocate for what they want. If that doesn't happen, guess what? People are going to vote and they're going to vote yes or no just because somebody's telling them. We need to educate ourselves about this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please, call the roll.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
I wasn't done.
I asked a vote, is anyone else go ahead? I did.
Um, I know, so I just want to know about three million dollar plan. Are we going to have a plan for that? Do we have one on what the streets? What Wyatt's costing three million, this new street?
Yeah, that's a good question and it was a question that I'm in detail about at the last council meeting, but I'll be happy to mention it again to the public. What the city passed recently is something called a green and complete street legislation. What most communities do, it didn't necessarily, the best method is whenever you paint a street, they just go ahead and put asphalt down. They don't put any attention to the striping, signage, street trees, handicap accessibility, bike lanes, nothing. It's one more asphalt. I'm sorry, let me just finish. I was asking a specific question and I, I'm not meaning to stifle, it's just I, um, I'd be happy to have her comment, but let me just finish up a few points. So the city of Pawtucket Falls was one of the first in New England to pass a green and complete streets legislation that says we will no longer just go ahead and put down asphalt. We started doing that because our streets were in really dire need of repair, absolutely really dire need of repair within the past few years. We took a bold step and this city council, those members in front of you, took the step to pass that legislation that says whenever we, we do a street, it is going to have all of those considerations taken into account so that we have better streets for our community, more street trees, handicap disability, appropriate striping, which reduces speed and traffic concerns, et cetera. And so unfortunately, the reality is that when you do a green and complete street in comparison to just painting down asphalt, it is more expensive. But it's an investment that this council and the administration think is an important. What I'd also say is that, yes, the city has been contributing two hundred thousand dollars over the past three years to do streets. That's only the asphalt and that's only to contribute, contribute a portion of what Pawtucket water supply has been doing also. So we supplement, when they rip up the street, they're responsible for doing portions of the replacement and the city supplements the rest. And no, we do not complete fifteen streets on our own with two hundred thousand. The fifteen streets that were listed in the presentation.
You have reimbursed.
Yes, that, exactly, we have reimbursed portions of those. And so we're able to complete a considerable amount of streets with that two hundred thousand. If we were doing it completely on our own, we would not have enough to do fifteen streets. Now, there were fifteen streets that were listed in the presentation that were referenced. Those fifteen streets are only to provide guidance as to the council and to the public, and I'll explain it more at the public sessions, as to the streets that our DPW has not yet worked on within the past five years. They were not meant to say these streets are only going to be the streets that we're going to work on, that we're only going to spend the three million on. That is not accurate and not a fair critique. What the green and complete streets legislation mandates, which I think is really good for the future of our city and for our residents, is that there needs to be a professional survey conducted, which is happening right now, assessing the quality of every street in our city. Not DPW's assessment, which is still a, a very quality assessment, but a professional assessment that will rank all of the streets. And the streets that we are looking to complete with that green and complete streets, um, three million dollars will be what that professional study says are the streets that we should tackle that are in the worst conditions. And so it takes the ambiguity and the selection from the city out of it and puts it at the hands of professionals. And so I can't tell you, and we cannot tell you exactly what are the streets that are going to be done because we have to wait for the results, we have to wait for the results of the professional survey. But the green and complete streets that, and that's the process that this council voted for. So we had discussions about it, we knew that they were going to be a little bit more expensive. But what I would say is, I'll explain this, I'll bring more detail when we have the public meetings, that there is a process for the green and complete streets as to which ones will get done and what's going to get done on our own. And yes, there is some discretion with the smaller street that only, that maybe is a dead end. We probably don't want a bike lane on that street, right? So there's, there's some flexibility and some discretion that's involved with that. But we put it into the hands of professionals to rank our streets and to provide us real guidance as to where we should be placing our efforts. And so that's, that, when we get that survey, when that's completed, then we'll know how much of that three million can be allocated to each of those streets.
Thank you, Josh. And yeah, the council member.
Yes, I want to, I just want to say that what the director just said, I was one of the councilmen that reached out to the director of public well, requiring that the job, I mean, even though the city look a lot better than it was before, the job that they did in the road is poor, the quality was poor. And they explained to me the reason why it was that. I mean, the layer they put on the, on the road, it was like, and so it was only one thick layer. And that's, that's going to break down more sooner than later. And then while we're questioning him, like a councilwoman, we better say yes, let's give the opportunity to voter to decide what they wanted to do because that's something we have to have in mind. Since Major James just took their office, the city look better, cleaner. We have urban policy like some particular say is true. And we should give them the opportunity to finish that project that he started.
Any other council member?
So in terms, in terms of the study, is that part of the comprehensive plan, Lucy?
I believe.
I think it's recommended, it's a part of the plan. Northside comprehensive plan, you have to look at sidewalks, correct?
I believe, I'd have to look at the green and complete streets legislation more in detail, but I believe that is associated with our comp plan.
Our comp plan that was started last year. So in all fairness, that study could have been done since last year. We knew that this was something that we wanted to put on the ballot for this year.
So I'd say that the comp plan is a, as many of the council members know, and I'm sure some of the public knows, comprehensive plan is a very long and difficult process which takes into account several different studies that are, some of that can be done internally, some that are done by professionals. We have made progress in our comp plan. It hasn't gone the exact route that we've wanted to go and for various reasons, turnover, new employees that aren't necessarily fully familiar with it, with the comp plan process. And so I think it plays into the comp plan, but.
Just off ground. And then last meeting, I had also mentioned taxes. So we talked about, the city said that there would be in line correctly on Rome, that this doesn't necessarily, necessarily mean that there's going to be a tax increase. So for me, I wanted to have the best faith. I wanted the city to tell residents that they were going to try their hardest to not raise taxes if this bond goes through. So can you assure us that?
Any other council members? One more, I guess, my name's Christopher for the city. Or can I, what can I, what I can assure the council and the residents is that in, in every budget, we do our best to maintain a zero budget. And those years when that happens, that, that will happen again. So two or three years from now, when the debt service, all of that will impact the budget, the city will do what it always does, make every best effort like it's done the past two years to minimize or zero the impact of this.
That doesn't really answer it.
So you say best faith?
I mean, best faith, we, even, even the five years under the bankruptcy plan.
It's three years, it's three years from now.
Well, those five years under the bankruptcy plan, we did not have to raise taxes. We raised taxes four percent every year when we didn't have to. So for me, I'm just looking for that best foot forward, saying that we will. We'll try exhaust all of our options and not raise taxes.
Again, I'm not, I'm not the AFO anymore, but I do not set just for policy, but what we'll say.
Your kindness, correct?
Yes.
And you give your recommendation.
What I, what I do is monetize what the city puts together in terms of an annual plan. And that plan will, as always, will be as close to zero as possible.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Any other council member?
I do, I have a question for the city solicitor. Uh, one of the residents. One of the residents mentioned a special election. So say we wanted to hold off on the bond until residents are more informed. I know we talk about residents making a decision, but a lot of times, we don't even have that information to make a fiscally responsibly, responsible decision. So in order to put that on residents, Central Falls has a very small, our education level for our residents is high school or less. So for you to say that, all of our residents are gonna go through this and read this and do all that, it's not happening. So for us, the more information that we put out there, the more clear that our residents can be when they're making these decisions. So that's on us, but it's also on the city to make sure that there's a plan, there's pictures, that people can interpret different things in different ways. So for me, when I talk about educating the community, is we need to do those things. So if we wanted to do a special election next year, and kind of put more information out there, come up with plans when we get the inspection, the different reports that we're doing, staffing, sustainability, how does that work in terms of a special election next year?
There would be a process for calling for a special election, which is similar to this, your passing ordinance and calling for a question that we hear about. I can't speak to all of the consequences of a decision like that, other than some basics such as, I believe it costs about twenty thousand dollars to run an election in the city in terms of opening sites weekly day or election votes. And also that special elections tend to have depressed turnout, so there's lower turnout because in a general election, you're gonna see more young people vote, you're gonna see more local people vote, and you're gonna see turnout, I think turnout generally is not as high in cities as it should be, but special elections, it's much, much lower. And so you tend to only have like insiders and people who have knowledge of the election voting. And so that's why questions tend to be on general elections, because that's where more people vote.
So we could have a special election next year.
We have a motion to approve this ordinance before-
Can we get a witness for the council has some?
I just have one comment. On page six of this packet-
Can you come up?
Thank you. On page six of the packet that, uh, six passed out, down the bottom, it says nothing about the purchase of a building. It doesn't say anything. You know, when I first read this online, last Monday or Sunday or something, I thought you're gonna rehab the existing holding center. There's nothing here. So I think you're gonna have to correct it again, you need to put purchase in. You said purchase, you said purchase, it's not here. That's my only comment. There's no, no, nothing about a purchase of a building.
So the bond question to the community is, do you want to borrow one million dollars to re-renovate, rebuild the community center? Does not speak to a location, it does not speak to anything. It creates a pot of money of a million dollars for the city council, the mayor, to start the process of rebuilding the community center. And so it could be that the administration negotiates with the Y, or the community decides the Y is not the best location. But it would have a pot of money of a million dollars, maybe for another location.
To purchase, it doesn't say purchase.
Well, the reason is, is that in that speech I brought up the last meeting, if there is a purchase, it will require coming back to the city council for approval. Any purchase requires city council approval. So if the voters approve this, and the administration decides to move forward with that location, the conference center, then that purchase agreement has to come back to the city council for further approval.
But the people don't understand. When they're reading this at the, at election time, at the board, at the voting booth, it doesn't say purchase. People who are not gonna go to those meetings are gonna say, oh, they're gonna redo the holding center, not purchasing of a building. So that's my comment. I don't know.
Thank you. Thank you. And you have one more comment that I'll allow.
Construction, construction is different.
So, sorry. So Chief Staff put together an outreach plan, was really straightforward. So my question is, what's, I didn't hear what the rush was. Like, why can't, if outreach is so simple, and we have a plan, why can we not be doing outreach prior? Like, it feels, okay, I'm gonna have to say it, 115 Illinois. People came here, had no plan, not a lick of information. I asked as a councilperson, and I voted no, because there was no information. The very next night, I went to the school board meeting, and they had all the details. How does that happen? I just asked that question. So what is the rush?
Thank you, you have one, I have one.
Money really didn't give you an answer as to what it's gonna cost us in our taxes. It will cost us in our taxes. What we heard last meeting was that we were gonna have to pay four hundred thousand dollars. In 2020, two hundred thousand is gonna come off of the bond that we have now. That leaves us two hundred thousand dollars. And where's that other two hundred thousand coming from? I asked what the cost would be on that, on today, what we're doing, and what our tax rate is today. Not what it's gonna be next week or next year, what it is today. And I never got an answer, the council never got an answer on that. That's dancing around the issue. There is a cost to it. And there's gonna be a cost to operating that center. In addition to what you have of the people that they're talking about in Parker, right? There's gonna be benefits that you're gonna have to pay. When the Y had it, and this was back in nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen, two thousand, the cost was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to operate the building. That was just operating. That was two thousand dollars. This is two thousand and eighteen. So it's gonna be more than that. So no one's taking into consideration what Councilwoman Fonseca has said. What's the operating cost? How are we gonna sustain it? Yeah, we could do all this, we get a bond for it, and it doesn't. How do we sustain the operation? That has been the problem over the last forty years here in the city, is how do we sustain the community center? I tell you, it's failed five times, four times. I know, because three of the times I was involved in it. First time, I came in and we straightened the finances out. Went along, we were breaking even, not making money, but breaking even, because the citizens of Central Falls do not pay what you need to pay to sustain the center. So the question is, what's the sustainability? What are all the facts about? And I don't know why the rush, that we gotta do it today, so it's gonna get done today. Doesn't need to get done today. In 2020, we're gonna have bonds go off that we're not gonna have to pay for. We're gonna have some money available. We've got money that supposedly we've collected in the circuses, like I've asked. Where are, what do we do with it? Do we have any available? Is there anything around that we can use to offset that? Give us another year or two years, and maybe this, this council and the city will come up with a plan to put a community center here and to sustain it. You could put a center here, but can you sustain it over the next ten, fifteen years? It hasn't happened in the past. I mean, we had people running a center who didn't pay federal taxes. That's how bad it was. You know, I can tell you the horror stories that were involved, and what it took to get it back on trail. And I know people don't wanna hear about the history, but history has to be looked at. Four times, I know, I know it did. So, and I still ask money, what's a dollar, what do we have to raise to get a dollar on taxes? And what is two hundred thousand dollars gonna cost us on whatever tax rate is today? You said you were gonna find that out.
When the council asks a question, I'll answer it.
That's the answers you get, from people I pay my taxes for. I don't even get a straight answer.
He's gonna respond. Huh? He's gonna come up.
Okay. But that's the kind of answers you get from the people. I asked it last time.
Okay.
What she said made more sense than anything.
Can you speak into the mic so they will?
What she said made more sense to me than anything. Just as Councilwoman Colleen had said, we need to be educated. Even though I may not understand some of this information that's being given, I do know money. And I know money is being spent crazy, is not properly being used. Dexter Street, you put red crosswalks that were not even needed. All you had to do was just paint it, which is much cheaper. That's why the money is too high, and money is overspent. You're spending it on stupid stuff that don't even need to be spent. I have worked as a crossing guard out here since 2013. I have seen things, there are stuff out there that don't even need. You got cameras out there that can't even pick up somebody who is speeding. On a day-to-day basis, I've had well over a dozen to two dozen vehicles that almost hit me, or one of the kids. So we have cameras that tells a traffic light when to change it from red to green. So I wanna know, where is the safety for our children? Okay, because that's not, that's not being safe. We talk about money, money for this, money for that. Let's spend money where it needs to be spent to make sure that we all are safe. Our children are not safe. I don't feel safe. We don't need red crosswalks painted. We need asphalt for new roads, so that way we don't have potholes in everybody's cars and getting messed up. Yes. The crossing lights, so that people can learn how to cross properly, that's a good idea. Having a ramp for those who are handicapped in a wheelchair, that's a good idea. Those cameras need to be surveillance cameras, so we can be able to pick up criminal activities and stuff like that. You have, as far as I know, one, two, probably three of those speeding, uh, greeter things out there. It just flashes to let people know that you're going over twenty miles per hour. That's all it does. If any money should have been spent, it should have been a camera there to pick up those who are going thirty to forty miles per hour on a side street. There's where you could have got your revenue. Tickets should be going out to all these people who are speeding through the city. But no, we wanna spend money on red crossing of bricks, fake. And, and, and I was shocked to find out that they were well over three, five thousand dollars. For what? Come on. Let's get a much better idea on how to spend the money and to get what needs to be done within this city. Okay? Because no parent is gonna want their kid over near some prison. And yes, we're not safe in many places, but we'll feel a whole lot safer if we're in an area like Hickson, where it's much bigger open space. That's a lot more safer. You have a property on Broad Street that's not even being used, it's just sitting there empty. What's being done with that building? Besides the building that's sitting across the street from my high school? I have not yet seen anybody go in and out of that building. What is it there for?
Thank you. Any other council members? Go, go.
No, I have none.
We've been talking about the community center. But I know it costs for the community center to sustain. And we need like a one million for that, for that building. But I also heard that some cities want like eleven millions. So no matter how much we spend, we have to, you know, spend to maintain that building. If it's one million, five millions, eleven million. So, and I think this, I know as she just mentioned, the, that building across the Y, the prison, might not, might not be secure. But I, I think everywhere, we don't feel secure, you know? And I think if we let that go, it's gonna be more difficult to get another billion. Eleven million dollars, that's a lot of money. I know they say they're twenty or forty percent, but as Council Rivera mentioned before, our job is just to educate our community. And they have the last option, to say yes or no. Sometimes it's easy to be part of, you know, part of a problem, or how we're gonna, the problem is how we're gonna solve that, you know? It's, don't, don't think, you know, it's not easy to be here, you know, do all this.
Thank you. So this is gonna be my last comment. I, all you guys know I chaired the committee to reopen the community center, that's where I grew up. That's where I learned how to play basketball, how to swim. I volunteered a hundred hours, like, one year in, in high school, my junior year. That's my heart, that's where everything is, the parks. You know, the parks restoration, that's where I went to, we get high summer meals every day. But for me, for this bond, five million dollars, I feel like it's very rough. So for me, just so residents know, we talk about outreach and stuff, a lot of the people in the crowd are here because I invited them. So you guys talk about outreach and education, but where are the people? So for me, I'm gonna vote against this bond, because I feel like there's no plan behind it. And often time when there's no plan, there's no execution. In order for something to happen, in order for things to go well, we need a plan. And for me, I feel like this is very rough. So I, I don't know how the other council members feel, but I would be open to reopening this next year, during a special election, so that we can actually do the outreach and educate people. Because if it's, if, we had a committee for a whole year. The mayor commissioned us to figure out how to reopen the community center, correct? Carlos, you were part of the committee. Josh, you were part of the committee.
Absolutely.
And the number one recommendation was to do a bond in 2020, not in 2018. That was a recommendation from the committee, not from Carly Fonseca, from the committee, to reopen it in 2020, through the guidance by the city, because of a lot of our bonds, we owe money. A lot of those bonds will come off of our books in 2020. So then that means that we can go out for more money. So for me, I'm not trying to rush the community center, I want it to be done well, and I want it to be done so it can be fiscally responsible. We had budgeted, we said as a committee, it would take two hundred fifty thousand to keep the building open a year. Right, where is that in this current, if, if we decide to, to, to go with the bond in the community center, where is that two hundred fifty thousand dollars in the budget? It's not in the budget. It's not in the budget, current budget this year. Okay? So for me, there's no plan behind a lot of this stuff. And for that reason, you know, for the committee work, we had, we had asked for a hundred thousand dollars, if you set aside, a hundred dollars compared to five million, for a person to be hired in a steering committee to guide the reopening of the center, so that there is a board of directors, so that we need to figure out the fiscal end behind it. And that person would be responsible for a capital campaign, so that we can get donors. You don't think Myova Davis will donate? You don't think we have a lot of other people out there that will donate to the community center? You don't think we have a lot of other people out there that will donate to the community center so that that burden doesn't have to be on the backs of the residents? The number one thing that the residents wanted in that survey, we surveyed over 300 residents as, as a committee. They wanted a pool. Nowhere in this plan does it include a pool or in future plans because there's no future plan, right? But if we fire that building, what's the, what's the plan after that? I haven't heard it, I don't know if you guys heard it, but I have, I, I don't know what that plan is. So for me, I think this is a rushed decision and I think our voters are not going to be, if, if, if we don't do the outreach correctly, they're not going to be as educated as we assume to make a proper decision about $5 million. $5 million, it's a lot of money.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council members? Clear to the floor.
Councilor Serre?
Yes.
Councilor Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca?
No.
Councilwoman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Solano?
Yes.
Don't you dare interrupt.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next slide, we have the Roman Union, read item B.
Correct. It is the ordinance permitting a formation of a whole city center. Introduction.
So introduced, thank you. Promotion of the agenda. Moved by Councilor, that was seconded by Councilwoman Fonseca and Councilwoman Solano. Standing there and at 77. Thank you, everyone.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.